Today is December 3rd, 2014, 10:00 AM in the morning. We've had a rough, a rough couple of days. Can everyone just keep those that suffered severe losses the last couple of days in their thoughts? Would everyone rise for a moment of silent meditation, pledge to the flag? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we have exonerations. There are six listings, $2,056.58 for tax years 2013 and '14. Judiciary Matters orders as of December 3rd. I believe the estate of Wigan Park is going to be delivered next week sometime here.
The estate of...
The one that we had last week and there was no one here.
Oh, yes. I talked to Judy. We're gonna hold that over to Mary.
Minutes of October 29th and the minutes of a Board of Assessment appeals in October. General County Fund bounties, $212,994.74. General County Purchasing Card, $25,724.78. Post severance fund, $1,0796.03. Get monthly, $5. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,006.44.50. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, $39.82. Non是我的cash fund, $235. Retail of $242,439.87.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion, second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Janet?
Janet is nothing today. It's raining a damn.
Cleaned.
Cleaning desk, eh? No should come in and work on my desk now. Okay. All right. That is clean. Okay. We gotta wait till 10:20 for hearing on, 10:20 and 10:30 on these two hearings on personal representatives. Let's move on to correspondence. What do we have in correspondence?
I have a letter from Citizens Bank that came through Terry Blaney's office requesting the release of $190,000 in bond used as security at Citizens to be released. This release, there still remains $1,300,000 worth of securities pledged to the bank. Requires approval.
And why do they want to release?
It's over what we have there. We have very small amount of money in Citizens.
Oh, yeah.
Does it need approval?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. We'll have a correspondence from your head. You have any other correspondence? We'll have a correspondence. Let's move on, unfinished business. Application for payment, Macero Corporation for Justice Center.
This application for payment is $1,231,499.77. It's to pay for a bond. Requires approval.
Move for approval of payment?
Second, I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. So the windows looking nicer now.
Yes.
Friday, um, next Friday, all of the glass should be in front.
Good. Good. Next, approval requisition number two on the capitalized interest on excise tax bonds.
This goes to United Bank, in the amount of $38,000, $180.95. It's a requisition for payment of capitalized interest for the series 2014A excise tax bond.
Okay.
And this goes twice a year.
Another excise tax on the tip.
Move for approval.
Second, I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Adoptions of revisions to rules of procedure.
There were several items that we discussed last week being revised. They're in red on your document, and this is to finalize adoption of those changes. One is moving to a public comment period up to the end of the meeting. Another, which is something that you've always practiced, is commissioners should check with another commissioner report, either it's on the agenda, or that the president will recognize elected officials and department supervisors underneath this list before the intercommissioner's report.
I think this will hopefully open up more people coming to our meeting so they could actually speak before we discuss issues, and that might help understanding concerns and questions. So I move forward that, I move that we adopt these new rules and procedures as a...
For January 1st.
For January 1st.
Yeah, basically everything except the one moving the public comment period or modifications we've made in the past.
Correct.
Year, year and a half, two years. So it's just bringing the written rules and procedures up to date.
Correct.
So I would second that. I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Public comment period, post-mining land use master plan. Is anyone here on that?
It's not a public hearing, but in October, we announced that the post-mining land use master plan is available for review. Plan Commission, Dr. Reiki came in with Richwood. They spoke about the plan being prepared. Thirty-day comment period was advertised, and there's been no comments received regarding the plan.
I've read the plan. It's only like 55 pages long, so there's a lot of, a lot of reading, so it doesn't surprise me no one decided to comment on. It's, it's really an update of something that was adopted, what, 10 years ago?
Yeah.
And has to be renewed.
Yes. Probably ended in one year.
Okay. So are there, is there anyone here present now that would like to speak on the post-mining land use master plan? No one's raising their hand?
Yeah.
I'm gonna call one more time. Is anyone here present for the post-mining land use master plan? Okay, close the public comment period. Is there anything to do on it? Do we have to put it on, on it? Do we approve it today?
Move to approve the post-mining land use master plan.
Second, I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Next, unfinished business, adoption of cooperative agreement for operation of processing transport.
This is something we've been discussing for about a year now. We've talked to the municipalities. This is a draft agreement. If you agree, we'll send this to municipalities, see if they would be willing to pay a charge of $35 per trip. It's not per person, that's per trip, for the sheriff's office to continue the transport to the regional jail. If you agree to adopt this, we can get it to the municipalities for them to take it to their individual houses and go back to us. Hopefully, we get some jail board help.
Yeah, and we've had several discussions and meetings in our intergovernmental meetings, and we really felt that this is a real, this was something that, when it first started with the North Central Regional Jail, it was informed that this, they wanted to come up with some idea, and we actually came up with a way and a format, and the overall cost would be $115, but we were only charging the 38, 33...
35.
30, yeah, 35. Okay. 35 per trip. So I move that we approve the cooperating agreement.
Yeah, this is, this is something that everyone, that I am told, I wasn't here at the time, but when this whole central transport was adopted, that once a cost level could be established, that everyone would enter into a cooperative agreement and contribute to a certain level. So we're actually still subsidizing all the trips down there quite substantially, but it will help offset, help maintain some of the rising cost of fuel and maintenance by traveling, what, 140 miles around trip? Yeah. So I'll second that. I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I've spoken with Sheriff Kizner about the paperwork, and we'll work that out between his staff and our staff to, to do the billing of the agreement and successful by all the municipalities.
Okay.
I had one thing held over. It was the letter support for the draft license application for Six and Alhaga River Water Power Project.
Yes.
I drafted that, just restating the items that were still in question. They may want, need to go ahead and send that letter.
Yeah, this was, this was, we continue to show our, show our support for water power projects, but there's too many unanswered questions with, at least two of the plans, the Morgantown Dam and the Point Marion Dam. So those questions have been posed, posed to them. I was on a recent conference call with representatives both in FERC and throughout into Pennsylvania, and this is, we're talking about four right here in our immediate area, but this affects dams and water power projects throughout Pennsylvania and western Virginia, so can we have support to go ahead and send this letter?
Yeah.
Basically, the letter says that we're in support. We still want the answers to our questions.
Yeah. I move that we send the letter.
Second, I have a motion, the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Judge, nice to see you here today.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to take a moment after a finish, unfinished business, to recognize you.
Thank you. Not necessary, but appreciated.
Certainly. Okay. I still got another eight minutes before we can do the hearing. New business. Got any new business?
I have one. Is your first?
Yes, sir.
I've requested a report from our Chief Court Security Officer, Mr. Gary White, concerning the security procedures that were implemented on Monday in the courthouse and his observations, but also, I first want to say on behalf of the county commissioners, and I happen to be here in the courthouse, I want to compliment them on an amazing professionalism and class act that I observed during my stay in the courthouse on Monday, and I wanted to pass on my appreciation to the men and women who protect our county and our county building. And also, I was also gonna thank, personally thank Judge Tucker, who also came, and it was nice that all parties in agreement that we wanted to make sure that this building was secure and safe, and unfortunately, it was like a test run of what could happen, and I'm very appreciative of that. And Mr. White, if you wanted to speak on, basically a little bit about what happened and also your observations, I would appreciate that.
Well, whenever we first became informed of what was going on in the county, Chief Palmer called me down to the sheriff's office and advised me what was going on, and told me to get all the manpower that I could. Thankfully, we had a light day in court, so I could use all available officers to come down, which was at, at different points over 10. We proceeded to, Mr. Bloom advised that we were locking the courthouse down. We, I immediately sent two officers to every door that I could until we got those doors locked. We called Bobby's office, and they were awesome. I mean, they got there immediately, and I called Carlos and thanked him because, I mean, they were on those doors immediately and did what, what they had to do. I staged at least three or four people, officers, in the main corridor of the courthouse. Once all the doors were locked, everyone came in and out of the building that way. I had officers patrolling the area, immediately surrounding the building. Also, officers were throughout the building for the potential security risks that we had. I must say that in the short amount of time that my officers had, we did an outstanding job. We did. I was more or less on the radio, the sheriff's department channel, so I could hear what was going on. Assistant Chief Tim Poses more or less directed the officers, and he did a great job. He did, I couldn't ask for anymore from officers. I must say, the short amount of time that we had, it went well.
Yes.
Didn't have any complaints from the public once they realized what was going on. And we got thanked by several later on, but that's what, that's what the security is all about, making people feel secure in this building. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
Once I'm, once you're done, if anybody has any questions.
I do also want to say that you might want to tell them at 5:00 what you also did for the employees, which I thought was exceptional.
At 5:00, we, I met, my officers met the employees down at the lower level entrance where they come in in the morning, and watched them till they got to the, the parking garage. The next morning, I was advised to go, I was advised that day to go ahead the next morning and keep it locked down for a period of time that we did not know. So what I did, I had two officers down there explaining to the employees when they come in, use the main entrance throughout the day, going in and out, or use their key card on the Chancery Road door. They had access to in and out because I had my manpower stationed there, so they had another way in and out that next morning. Everything went well. It did, everything went well.
And I really appreciate, since I happen to be here, I mean, the safety and security of our employees here was utmost, was really seen by the people who worked here, received numerous compliments. Unfortunately, you're never needed until something happens, and then they realize, and I knew it was working when no one was going out to lunch and they were ordering and delivering it here, and everyone was staying here because they felt very safe. And again, not only do I want to tell Sheriff Kizner and thank all the officers and deputies there, but also the court, because we always take them for granted until it's needed. And again, I really appreciate everything you did, and I just wanted the public to know what you did, and I believe down the road, unfortunately, well, when we have the new judicial building, there will only be one access of one way, and also, when that happens, we're probably gonna have to reconsider what's going on here, so it's something that we were doing.
If, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
That building's gonna be secure one way in, one way out.
Correct.
So any, the people in that building are, will be very well protected.
Yes.
Unlike the people in this building. How can you differentiate from the two? The value of the lives of the people in this building against the value of lives of people in that building? What the scuttlebutt that I've heard is, people don't want to be inconvenienced because they have to take a few extra steps to get through whatever doors that we feel that should be open and the doors should be locked. I take my job personally. Everybody that comes in and out of that facility is our responsibility. We care about the people in this building, or we wouldn't have this job. Something needs to be done in this building now. Something needs to be in place, because the only difference between Monday and today, the threat's still out there.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is minimize that threat if and when it occurs. It'll occur, the facts state it'll occur at some time. We're just trying to, we just want something in place for when we do go down there.
Right.
You know, you can't, you can't wait till we get down there and then try to put something in place here, because it'll, it'll just, it'll explode on you.
Right.
I mean, the manpower alone, you'll have, you'll have to figure out. If that's what you want to do, you may not, you may not want to do that. You may want to say, well, you know, everything's fine the way it is. I beg to differ, everything's not fine the way it is, and Monday is a proven fact of what can occur in this building or around this building, and probably what will occur, because let's, let's face it, the streets aren't getting any safer. They're not. And I appreciate a boss that I have that is security-minded enough that sees the need, you know, and cares that there is a need. This horse has been beat pretty well, and I just asked the commission to really consider to adopting something along the lines of what we did Monday, because anybody come through this building, were they inconvenienced? Yes, they were inconvenienced, but it worked.
Right.
And it did work. And once it's repetitive, people will get used to it. You know, you'll hear snickering and eyes rolling and complaining for a couple of days, but once they get into the flow, then I, there's no doubt in my mind that it can work, because their safety means, means something to me, or I wouldn't have this job. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, I, I think that the commissioners, unfortunately, because of this incident, I think we're probably gonna have to take a look at it again and see if there's any changes that we would agree upon. We'll wait and see, not for long, but I think what we'll do is put it back on a work session to, to consider what our options could be. I do agree with you, though, that if we were implementing, especially since we're about to go to a new building, we probably need to start implementing whatever we're gonna do here, but I don't want to overextend my authority, and that's where the other commissioners, you know, we want to come up with a, a compromise, but I do agree with you that we are at a situation now that we did, we had a test run, it worked, and I don't believe there was that much of an inconvenience, and in fact, it really made it more secure, I believe, and hopefully, you know, we will, the three of us will sit down, discuss it, and come up with what the best solutions would be.
And I'd like, I'd like to thank the commissioners for how, how they work with us over the years. I mean, we have worked really well together, and they, you all have tried to give us what we have needed to do our job and do our jobs the way it needs to be done, and I, and I personally, I appreciate that, I really do, and, but I just think that, you know, there is more that needs to be done in this building.
I think that's something we'll look at, and I'll, I'll see if Eldon wants to say something, but I didn't want to put Eldon on the spot, I just wanted your report, but, you know, not, not, we would make any decision at this time.
Well, no, understand.
But something we would, we're gonna have to look at, because we're gonna be moving and having a second building like this, and with having, you know, how we're gonna manpower it.
I just want to thank everybody for their dedication and their work, Sheriff's Office. MECA did a tremendous job, the Sheriff's Office. I know I talked to Perry right in the midst of things that were going on. It was, it was a very trying time and scary time for everyone, highly emotional time for, for a lot of people, because I, I think just about everyone in this room knew one or more of those people closely, and sad, tough thing to deal with, but I want to commend the professionalism of, of everyone, both here at the courthouse, at MECA, in the Sheriff's Department, the state police and all. Thank you for that.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Yes, you can.
That we all to consider in, in work sessions. Gary talked about the differentiation of protection vis-à-vis that building down there and that here. You have that right now. The metal detector is only on the third floor, which means anybody can come in and do anything they want to on the lower level, first and second floor. They can come in and plant a bomb, they can come in, the face of the court is the circle clerk's office. They can come straight in there. Carrie has so many people down there, they can come in down there. It's not fair that the third floor's protected and the other floors aren't. And you might think that's weird, because I'm on the third floor, but there are a lot of people in this building that I care about, too, and it needs to be equal among everyone so that everybody is safe, not just the third floor.
Thank you, Erin. So, yeah, this is, this is something that we've got to study on a continual basis, I think, the last time we were in on this issue, Sheriff, that's something that we said. We would revisit on a continual basis, so certainly now's the time to revisit it, right? So we'll certainly put it on the work session and address it. Thank you. Sheriff, did you want to add anything, sir?
No, I think Gary covered it very well. I think the judge hit, hit the nail on the head as well. You know, even though you have a metal detector on the third floor, like she said, if a bomb is planted on a lower level, this building's coming down. Doesn't matter if you have a metal detector on the third floor. I've always been a proponent of one access, one egress, and if we have to, you know, keep revisiting that until change is made, as Gary said, you know, unlike him, security-minded, and I look at those things and consider those options all the time, and each time I've spoken on this subject, it's been the same, same topic, and my answer's always been the same. I think that's the only way to secure this building. It's the only way to get adequate security for this building, for the employees that work in this building. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Phil. Okay. We're past our time for hearings. We'll move now to the first hearing, scheduled to 10:20. Hearing to consider removal of personal representative in the estate of Robert McIntyre. Pardon, Sheriff? Okay, Sheriff, you are?
I'm David McIntyre.
Okay. You can set up, move up here to the table if you like, if you wanna, if you're gonna make your presentation, or do you have an attorney representing you?
I do not have an attorney.
Okay. Then you can just have a seat here, so I guess you'll be speaking for yourself.
But there's some other people with you, or?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Too much space for them. Okay. All right. There's a couple of seats up front, or there, wherever you'd like. Would you? You're, you're David McIntyre, you're one of the...
I'm one of the heirs.
You're one of the heirs. Are you the one that filed the petition?
No, this would be the second heir, my sister, Sadie McIntyre.
Okay, your sister Sadie, you're the one that filed, filed, okay, and you, ma'am, are?
I'm her mother.
This is Mary Alice McIntyre. She married Chief Predators.
Yes, okay, I saw that in, in that. John Wiley, you're here.
As Administrator CTA?
As Administrator CTA, thank you. I'm just trying to get everyone lined up for Janet. Are you in the McIntyre estate issue, or? No, you're not. Okay. Yes, Mr. Magrow?
I'm Philip Magrow, and I'm just appearing on behalf or at the request of Hastings Funeral Home to see what's going on, being the funeral home that buried the deceased party in this case.
Okay. Is there anyone here present that I have not yet identified that is here on the Robert, the estate of Robert McIntyre? Anyone else? Okay, Janet, did you get the identification on everyone? Okay, thank you. Okay. We've got quite a detailed file here. Sadie McIntyre. I'm gonna call you by your first name, since there's so many McIntyres called, if I say just Mrs. McIntyre, I might not be right. So Sadie McIntyre, you're the one that filed the petition.
Yes.
Do you wish to speak to that? You want to add anything other than what you wrote? You want to say what, what, what your request is?
Really, I just want to get this whole thing settled. Really, I just want to get this whole thing settled, and like, the vehicles that are on the property are depreciating, get them sold and off the land property.
Okay.
If I may add?
Yes, sir.
It has been over three years, so, I'm sure you have reported the judiciary commissioner to the commissioners here.
Right, yes.
Well, first of all, the first article, there's a typographical error. The date of death was September 26, 2011, not 2009.
Okay, 11, all right.
Right. So it is, it has been over three years since my father's death, and on the 21st of this month, it will be three years since the will was recorded, and there's been absolutely no progress made on the settlement of the estate.
Okay. Anything else the petitioners want to say at this point? Okay. Mr. Wiley, you're the Administrator of CTA. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and present a file report, the receipts and dispo- Yes, I'd like to go ahead and present a file report, the receipts and disbursements that were in my possession. I think this is an original, and I have perhaps assigned an unnoted copy here.
That's fine.
Is that right?
That's fine with me.
Alright.
He's, he's the lawyer, I can, I, I don't mind, I'm the layman, so I can take it for that.
I have already given one to uh Mr. Magro, his counsel, unfortunately, I've only got one left, which I was going to read shortly from, although I don't wanna stop you from reading it first, if there is.
Go ahead, I could, I could do both at the same time.
You can do more than I. Uh, the time for filing of estate claims has expired, and I'm withdrawing any objections and proposed distributions uh and request a removal as my Administrator CTA. Uh, I have done things in this estate, I examined homes for additional property, although I have not received any other property than was set forth in my report. Uh, the distribution to Hastings, said four thousand dollars was objected to, although it reduced the joint liability of one of the claims by four thousand. A distribution to the clerk of twenty-seven dollars in fees was not objected, nor was the two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the bond for the estate. The expenses of uh the Commissioner uh Lynn Crane are not known by me and are not reported upon, and they have not been paid by me. I have since this time subpoenaed and reviewed bank records. It was alleged there were a variety of uh accounts in different banks, I found nothing other than is set forth in the report. Um, I have, uh, I would note that the account was terminated by the bank due to a request that they could not find or identify.
Okay, John, uh, let me stop you here. Has this copy been given to the heirs?
This is, I just prepared it.
Please get me a copy, hit these, to the heirs, please. Go ahead, John.
Um, the bank immediately placed all of this in the hands of the treasurer, and it took me some time to get the treasurer to release the funds to me. Uh, the only uh amounts in the estate, to the best of my knowledge, was that received, and it's the only property that has come into my possession, five thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-four cents.
Now, that was the bank account that was at the state treasurer that you had to reclaim?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Because the bank had terminated it due to somebody's request, I never found.
Someone's request, to me that?
Definitely, it was terminated, well, it's, it was terminated almost immediately after his death, I'm not sure why. Went into the hands of the treasurer.
Hmm, okay.
I think it's quite bizarre, because I don't think that was a joint account.
It is quite bizarre, that's.
However, uh, I would point out, uh, in the appraisement of the life insurance, I believe that is under uh Schedule B.
Okay, let, let, let's hold that, would you please?
Alright.
I wanna let him complete his, make a note there if you need to remember it, okay? Uh, I want him to complete his presentation. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Wiley.
Our review of the subpoenas show only the amount that I have set forth there, and uh, I got it back from the treasurer. There was a claim that a second car, car was garaged on Somerset Road, I could never locate it. Um, uh, Miss uh McIntyre, who is, is here, uh, said that she only had one car, the other car in her possession. The postal box of the deceased was closed due to a request they could not find. Uh, I reviewed the sheriff's messages, or the sheriff's records in Montague County, because there was a concern by uh Mr. McIntyre that not everything in the estate in the accounts there. I found nothing there. I reviewed the county clerk's real estate records, I found no other real estate. Uh, there was some glassware listed. Uh, because it can be deemed a paraphernalia concern by the West Virginia Code, I really would not sell it, not without a license to do so either. Remaining assets, which is a vehicle or two, even if sold at a commercially reasonable sale, uh, would still not pay all the claims. Uh, the delay of the last year or so was due to my health, which has deteriorated. The remaining funds are inadequate to pay all the claims pursuant to the West Virginia Code requirements. No other property remains in my hands, except what I have suggested. That amount is one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, a request on the receipt of my report, that it be turned over to Lynn Crane as Commissioner for the estate, and that she make any further decisions in that regard. I see claims totals of four thousand one hundred and nine, ninety-four dollars to Mary McIntyre, ninety-five dollars to remaining claims to the funeral house on which she was joined. And due to Mr. McIntyre, the sum of one hundred dollars. I am estimating Commissioner's fees at some five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this would require liquidation uh with partial payments to the remaining people. Uh, it's not really a concern of mine, although I know that if the families now agree.
Would that be done by the fiduciary commission?
Pardon?
Would that be done by the fiduciary commissioner?
I think it could be.
Phil, would you agree with that?
No, I would not. The fiduciary commissioner is just an individual reviewing the documents and being uh somebody that, that again publishes things in the paper and submits to the, to, to the commission a final report regarding uh the, whatever settlement there might be.
So, you, you, we'd need, we'd need another administrator?
We'd need another administrator.
One to clarify, make sure. Go ahead, John.
Um, these future costs will uh exceed everything that is there, uh, by a long shot. I note that the family is now agreed, if, well, the one remaining large claim were removed, then the uh vehicles could be privately disposed of, and uh, Mr. McIntyre paid, and the problems here would go away. So, but, that's of little uh effect to me, I'm offering to resign from the post, offering to dispose of.
Smith, this is your filing report?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's under oath.
Okay, I, I, just clarifying for the record, sir.
I understand. Uh, if you wish me to pay out fourteen twenty-four twenty-four, I have nothing else to do with it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Magro, do you, uh, wanna add anything to this, sir? Uh, is our legal counsel as well?
Again, if, if, if the two vehicles are susceptible of being sold by, turned over to Mr. Wiley, let him sell them and, and make that a fine, and to, and with, it appears that somebody's withdrawing the, the other claim, is that right, Mr. Wiley?
That's, I don't, that, that, the other claim that I'm aware of is from Mary McIntyre, you still have claim, correct?
I think she still has claim.
Oh, I thought you said claim?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
She still has claim. Now, one, one other thing, uh, do you have anything else, Phil?
No, you are.
John, Phil?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to you now.
Okay.
You were talking about a life insurance policy?
Yes, if you look at the, you have a copy of the appraisement that Mr. Wiley filed.
Yes.
I believe if you look at, I believe section, uh, Schedule, yeah, Schedule B, you'll notice the life insurance there of five thousand nine hundred and six dollars forty-five cents.
Schedule B.
Schedule B, tangible personal property of every kind.
I see E.
Alright.
Schedule B.
Do you have a B in there?
Yeah, I have a B here.
It's one in the back?
Yeah, left, yeah, got it.
Alright.
Okay, you'll see that life insurance uh listed there, five thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars forty-five cents.
Well, here it is.
That was transferred over to the treasurer of the state of West Virginia. Uh, because uh my father had failed to claim that insurance when he turned sixty-five years of age due to, they wanted to contact him. That, I believe, is what Mr. Wiley's referring to when it comes to uh receiving that from the treasurer of the state of West Virginia. The bank accounts, to the best of my knowledge, are still being held clear about the bank. And if I could draw your attention to Schedule E on the next page, there appears to be a zero balance in there.
Right.
And a uh statement of opinion, as opposed to a numeric value, that savings and checking accounts are presumed low or empty. Well, I would personally prefer a numeric figure in there as opposed to a statement of opinion. That was my objection to the appraisment. My uh current objection, and I believe I shared this with my sister, the, the second heir of the estate, is the time delay. We realize Mr. Wiley has had some health issues, and we were sympathetic to that, but I think three years after the uh recording of the will, and there's been no uh progress made, has been ample enough time to have this settled.
I, I think what we need to do here, and I'm gonna look at my card, uh, I think what we need to do, since Mr. Wiley has uh submitted what he says is his final report uh and offered to withdraw, I think based on the questions that you brought up, that what we need to do is go ahead and appoint Sadie, you're the one that, you, you've requested to be appointed, correct, Sadie?
Yes.
Okay, and the beneficiaries are amenable to that? And the creditor, that's correct? You can say yes or not.
I do it, or you do what?
Yes.
Yes.
You wanna do it? That's acceptable.
That's acceptable, okay. And then uh if there, if there, uh, what, what do we give them, thirty days to raise any questions about this final report, or how do we do that? Carrie, help, help me on that, I forget now exactly the day, date.
I think the question before you today was a petition to remove uh the administrator of the CTA.
Yeah, he, he's resigned.
Okay, so you, you're gonna approve that petition?
I'm gonna approve that, number one, yeah.
Removal.
Okay.
You're going to substitute another person.
Sadie McIntyre, he's writing it down to make the motion.
Okay.
To take the administration and require uh the outgoing Commissioner will record, the report, final receipts and dispersments needs to be uh taken downstairs and filed.
So, he needs to take this original down there?
Before she can.
Do you have another original, or do you need this one back, John?
Uh, I need that one back.
Okay.
Before she can take her oath to become the next administrator.
Okay, so they, they could do that all right now, they could all go down and do that?
If you accept that final, you need to accept his petition, a brief petition for removal, accept the report, final receipts and dispersments, we'll record it downstairs, and then she can take her oath.
Is that understandable or acceptable to you all?
How about, okay, I move in favor of the petition of removal of the administrator.
Administrator CTA, okay.
Okay, that's, let's, let's do it individually.
You wanna do each one?
Yes.
Okay, I got a motion, I'll second that, I got a motion and a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay, I move that we receive the final report of the outgoing accounts, receipts and dispersments as to be registered?
To be filed with the clerk.
To be filed, clerk.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second all in favor, say aye.
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 And then after that's done, then we uh, I move that we have Sadie McIntyre to be the administrator.
The Administrator CTA.
CTA.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, that's it. Then you can figure it out, and figure out the difference between the life insurance and the others, and do whatever you want, and hope it all works out.
Sorry it took so long, but hopefully we can get it resolved.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for all agreeing, because usually not everyone agrees.
Yeah, sometimes it's a much more, much more dispute.
Yes.
But that, that one worked out pretty smoothly, thank you.
Any further questions we have, we can uh address that uh.
Yeah, Judy down there, off of you.
Alright, thank you very much.
You can always contact us too, but we'll probably send you back down there.
No doubt, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, it's one done.
Okay, the next uh hearing is on the estate of Norma J. Kelly, uh, application of fiduciaries to the names listed in the last will and testament. And that's the, consider the removal of the personal representative uh who, in this case, Deborah S. Lucky, is that right? Lookey, Lucky?
I'm not sure.
L-U-C-K-E-Y?
Lucky.
Lucky, okay, uh, everyone identify themselves, please. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Michelle Bechtel for the creditors and all of them, Bechtel and Jacqueline.
Right, and you're, you're the creditor, you're representing the single creditor, I wanna make sure, or all three creditors?
The single creditor.
Uh.
Our law firm.
Gi, Giannola Barnum and Wiley.
Well, now then, it's Giannola Barnum, Bechtel and Jacqueline.
Okay, they changed. See, I knew, I knew I wasn't gonna remember it, so I tried to get you to say it, but you wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
You had to, you had to put me on the spot.
One spot against you.
That's right.
Okay, Janet, did you get her phone now? Okay, I'll just call you Michelle, how about that? Uh, would you all identify yourselves back there, you're with the estate of uh, of uh, Norma Kelly?
Yes, I'm Catherine A. Humphries.
You're, you're a beneficiary?
No, I'm her daughter. Uh, Debbie's my sister.
Okay.
Deborah Lucky's my sister.
Okay, but you're, you're listed as a, as a beneficiary, okay. Are you her husband?
I'm Max Humphries, Mrs. Humphries, Mr. Humphries.
Okay, very good. Anyone else here present on the uh estate of Norma Kelly? Anyone else? Okay, alright, uh, Ms. Bechtel, I think you were the one that filed this.
Yes, um, she passed away in March of two thousand thirteen, um, her will was amended for probate in April of two thousand thirteen, no appraisment or anything's been filed, um, as a creditor, we're asking that either, uh, she do so or be removed, and the sheriff be appointed, uh, to represent, uh, to administer this estate.
It's, uh, the sheriff said, he just left.
No, he didn't.
Oh, no, the sheriff didn't just leave Michelle.
I, I, I thought that's why she was naming you real quick, you know, he's out of the room, uh, there you go.
She likes how we've worked on another estate together, so she brings my name up and throws it around so easily.
Well, uh, tell, tell me if I'm correct or not, you, you could actually apply.
Um, I could, yes.
Because it's been more than a year.
Mm-hmm, but I'm not doing so.
Huh?
I'm, I'm not applying, I'm asking for the sheriff to be appointed. Yes, you're right, I can, you're right, I could ask for that, you're correct. If I knew, if there was an initial accounting or appraisement filed, and I knew what we were dealing with, I would not be as hesitant as I am, uh, to take that role on.
And Miss Humphries, you, you don't wanna apply to be the replacement?
No, sir, because I knew nothing of this till I received the letter, and I had nothing in it, I don't know what went on or anything, so I really don't want to get involved with it.
Okay. It looks like you're, you're wearing checks, Sheriff, it's look like.
Apparently so, I think Michelle's about to make her last move.
I know.
The bishop makes the last move.
Man's around the corner, I could hit field check, man, right around the corner.
I can feel my king fall.
So, again, what are you requesting, so I get it correctly?
That, okay.
Go ahead.
That, um, Deborah Lucky be removed as the personal representative, and the sheriff be appointed.
Okay. Do you have any discussion on that, or?
Uh, I, I just wanna clarify, um, I think the full records here, she'd been notified, letters been sent out, and I just wanna acknowledge that Miss Lucky is not here, even though the notices and everything was sent to her. So, uh, we, we need, we need to remove, remove her, and we need to ask for her to, any accounting. She have thirty days, is that, is that, is that where the thirty days comes in?
I don't think that she has to have that long time, I think it's at least ten days.
Ten days, okay, thank you, I, I wasn't sure which one was, which one was which. So, first motion we need is to remove her as the uh executor tricks on this estate, and that we'll give her ten days to submit her accounting on what she's done on the estate. And then the second part is to appoint the sheriff.
Point the sheriff.
Sheriff.
Okay, first is, I move to remove Decky, Deborah Lucky as the executor, and have her give us any accounting within a ten-day period.
I'll second that, I have a motion and a second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I move that the sheriff be appointed as the, as the administrator, or?
The Administrator CTA.
The Administrator CTA, is that correct?
I think it's the.
I think it's the Debonas or is it CPA?
Debonas, that's right. Debonas administrator, administrator Debonas.
Okay, as, as stated.
That's right. The administrator Debonas, you're right.
Okay, administrator Debonas, sorry.
Because he's the sheriff, because he carries a gun, he's Debonas.
Okay. Debonas, okay.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Sheriff, sorry, she, she checked with you. I tried, I tried. You saw me, my thesis tried.
Do you have, yeah, do you have any questions? I see you have a...
What will happen if she, if Debbie doesn't submit this stuff within ten days?
Well, the sheriff will visit her and get the information.
Well, I just wanna say that I'm embarrassed to be here. This, all of this stuff should have been done and I don't understand why it wasn't.
It's no reflection on you, ma'am. And having been here a while and been an attorney of practice in front of the commission, this is not unusual. It happens all the time.
But let's, let's end on a positive note. How's your daughter doing?
She's doing great, thank you. She's in Kentucky at the Abraham Lincoln birthplace. She's now chief of interpretation at the park.
She was a fourth grade at University High School and I've been following her travels because she was even at Valley Forge at one time. And I really enjoy watching what she's doing.
She's on her sixth park in thirteen years, Tom. But she's doing this as she, I mean, just, it's amazing.
She moves right on up.
Well, I know you're proud of her and I, please pass on and I'm proud of her and I, I keep following her and her progress and look forward to her come, please have her come in sometime and just say hello.
She had a good counselor in high school.
So he worked...
Can I comment on one security in the courthouse?
Yes, you can, sir.
Totally off the record.
Yes.
For me, I, I just told the sheriff, honesty locks on all the exterior doors, card swipes for the employees to get in, the jumbotron needs moved down at that front door, and everybody that comes in this courthouse doesn't work here needs to pass through that jumbotron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We took public time in early.
Gary White's my cousin and I heard him talk and I thought that he's doing a good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, y'all take care.
Okay, thanks.
All right, that completes that. Okay, one more new business item is...
Media's still here?
What's that?
Oh, we didn't.
We didn't?
Oh, okay, well, there was probably moved in second. Okay, I moved, I moved it.
Which one we doing?
The sheriff.
Have we moved in second? I, I usually do it automatically in my...
If I move it, just verify it.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it. Have a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Sheriff, you're, you're Debonas.
You're, you're a Monas, Amonis, Debonas.
Okay. Okay, moving back to new business, I am happy to announce that the interchange on Interstate seventy-nine for the University Account Center Drive Tiff has been signed and is in the process to start putting that in. That is essential, that, that interchange is essential and was the key part of the entire Tiff project, so I'm extremely excited about that. And last week, the commission has authorized me to begin the, the process of laying out the west side. And I could also add that, that I know that shortly or before too long, we'll, we'll start seeing how that west side is going to develop. It's gonna be major growth and we do have an overwhelming interest from a number of large companies and organizations that are looking on that west side. So it's very exciting as to what the west side of Montague County is gonna look like here in three to five years. It's gonna, gonna be amazing. So I'm happy to announce that we're often, that all they need now is the shovels to start in there.
And I wanted to thank, you know, personally Eldon and the people do not realize that Eldon has been our contact person, Tom Aiman. And I also wanna thank many of the officials from WVU who are in the process of working this compromise out and that we've actually had it, we can move forward and the growth and that will help Montague County for future generations. I don't think people realize what this is about to do and what we're now negotiating. And it may look small right now, but this is an enormous step for our future in the next several years.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any more new business? Okay, reports from elected officials. Assistant Mark Music, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, nothing.
Clark, Carrie Blaney, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir. I, as you know, we are currently leasing some space at the Mountaineer Mall for our election equipment. And I have made contact with Mountaineer Mall about remaining in that location or at the Mountaineer Mall through the two thousand and sixteen election. So I have with me today for your consideration, the current lease that we have with the Mountaineer Mall expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. And I have a, a lease that they have prepared to begin January one, two thousand and fifteen, and run through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for your consideration. The amount per square foot is the same as what we're paying now. We just need to get new documents signed to continue our ability to stay there.
That's great, that's great. We, we, that's something interesting that lots of people don't realize, but every fiscal year there's an election. Every fiscal year there's an election. So we gotta commend your office, Carrie, and all the work you do. But a lot of people don't realize that, that's why you gotta budget every year for election, because every fiscal year there's election, either, either a primary or general election.
Do we need to do that today or should we wait until next week's, that way?
No, no, we, we can approve this at least.
I move for approval of the lease.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, do you have anything further?
I'd like to make a request for Jambi to be appointed as the executor. No, just a couple of things. I was just made aware that we need to replace a transmission in our inmate transport van that has gone bad. We have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it now. It's a lot of miles in a short period of time. I know the other one had like two hundred and seventy and we finally got rid of it and it was only three years old up there. So the miles add up quickly and I'm glad the commission has taken a position about the possibility of charging that transport fee. That'll help out with, with those purchases as well. The other thing is, I appreciate the, the kind comments about what law enforcement's been through the last couple of days. It, it took an effort of several different agencies to bring that situation to a conclusion as quickly as we could. Our Office State Police, Granville, Westover, Star City, Monttown, FBI, ATF, and the US Marshal Service were all involved in that. And a lot of people don't know that that many agencies were involved, but each one of them played a part in, in getting information, developing suspect and, tracking cell phone calls and things like that. So it was a concerted effort on everybody's part. And it was a tragic event. It should never have happened and, you know, probably the, the outcome was what we could expect that it was gonna be because of some of the things that had been said. So, but I just wanted to say thank you for your kind comments regarding that. I appreciate the fact that the initiative was taken to lock down the courthouse the way it was. I think it was a smart move on, on your all's part to do that. And I agree with most of what everybody else has said here about security. You know how I stand and how I feel on that. And I think it's something we need to do because it really is not if something's gonna happen, it's just gonna be when. In today's society, we see in a lot of other courthouses throughout the country that things, terrible things have happened to people in courthouses through no fault of their own, but because they were in a situation that didn't have that heightened security and put them at a vulnerable position. So I would ask the commission to, again, like you said, reconsider that, visit that again and hopefully make a decision that, that'll have a positive impact for all the employees that not only work in this courthouse, but in the new man act as well. That's all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mayor Johnson, do you have anything for us?
I'd just like to say that in light of, you know, the horrible day that we all had on Monday, that the news on this interchange is, is quite refreshing. I mean, it's, and like you said, echo what you guys have already said, people don't understand the, the impact that this is gonna have on the entire county. And good work. I mean, it's, you guys, you guys have done your job.
Thank you.
Wish I could've done more, but I was always there to do what I could do, you know.
You backed us up.
We appreciate your support.
And I really appreciate that.
It took everyone's support and, and I think people need to understand. It wasn't just WVU. You all came through. It's, everyone came through on this.
Well, we're looking forward to it. Thanks for that. That girl was good, though.
Commissioner Wright Hopkins, do you have anything for us today, sir?
Just nothing that I've been going around and meeting with various elected officials. I haven't met them all. I'll be at nine one one at one o'clock. And the other is that next Wednesday there is a full day training, so I won't be present.
Have fun.
I spent six hours here yesterday just simply going for last, last year's budget replacement, just simply so I will be much more familiar with what I've been in the past.
I'll, I'll be down there for the last half because I wasn't able to cancel all the meetings, but I'll be down there the last half of the training. Diane, you have anything? Your hair does look nice. Dave's got me started. He was, he's like a bug, you know.
I might cut all that out of the video.
Bobby, you have anything? Jambi, you have anything?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. They're both saved to dates. On September nineteenth and twentieth, the wine and jazz festival will again be at Camp Muffley. And also on April twenty-fifth, the International Chili Society, we're doing an International Chili Society cook-off called Heat in the Hills. It's gonna benefit empty bowls and it's gonna be held at Camp Muffley also. It's April twenty-fifth.
Very good.
Yep.
Hope you come out. That'll be good. Okay, reports from county commissioners. Tom, you have anything?
Three quick ones. First, Jim, I wanna congratulate you and, and the staff being proactive and going out and getting these type programs. And I think that's something that we're gonna see more in this county and I really appreciate that. The second, I received several phone calls and concerns already about the article that was in the Dominion Post yesterday about the solid waste authority. All we can say as county commissioners, and I love Eldon wants to act or say something, we have been monitoring the situation and until we're permitted to get involved, we are just still making sure, monitoring, seeing. We, the three of us I know are committed to a recycling program. We want this continued and we're just waiting to see what actually unfolds after this next month. And the third thing I'm just gonna say is I noticed in the Charles Gazette, an article yesterday about how the revenues are reported up by the state tax office. And I didn't notice anywhere where it stated that Montague County surely contributed a share this past month. Thank you.
Thank you. I really don't, I really don't have anything to add that's already, that hasn't already been discussed. Comments from the public? Comments from the public? I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
I'll second. I have a motion and a second all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at eleven oh five.